I'd like to call this meeting a view of Newark City Council order, May 3rd, 2021. We're back in chambers. It's good to see everybody. Thanks for coming. Janine, please call the roll.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. LaBoudis?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
Present.
Mr. Marmee?
Present.
Mr. Rath?
Here.
Mr. Barker?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Fennell?
Here.
Ms. Hall.
We have nine here this evening. Next on the agenda is the invocation. Mr. Blake, would you like to introduce yourself?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I'd like to introduce Reverend Michelle Dayton. She came to Newark last July, and she's with Trinity Episcopal Church, which is just right on the other side of the square. And she's very active with NWA CP and the Newark Association Ministers Association, Newark Alliance Ministers Association. So we just really want to welcome her tonight to lead us in prayer and prayer over our city tonight. Welcome.
Thank you. Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the privilege of serving the people of Newark. Help each person to act with character and conviction, and to listen with understanding and goodwill. May each one speak with charity and restraint. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us. And to treat all persons, no matter their station in life, with the reverence that your creation deserves. And finally, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your beloved children, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus, that's the time of council discussing anything pertaining to the agenda. Nine, do we have anyone?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmee?
I make a motion to excuse Ms. Hall.
Motion to excuse Ms. Hall by Mr. Marmee. Second by Mr. Blake.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All those in favor, give me a, consider a thumbs up, give me a yes.
Yes.
That passes, thank you. Next, we have the minutes of our April 19th, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion to approve those?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barker.
Second.
By Mr. LaBoudis. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, say aye. That passes, thank you. We have one appointment this evening. Mayor Jeff Hall announcing the appointment of Eric McKee as the newly appointed chief of Newark Division of Police. Mayor Hall?
I just want to welcome Eric on board. We actually swore in a new female police officer this morning, and department's running great, and still obviously carries a little grief with the passing of our Steve Baum, but I think Eric and the team's doing a great job, so I welcome him on board.
Did you want to mention the 19th?
Well, we're limited to the amount of people, but two weeks from tonight, there will be a swearing in here at about 6:30, a Sarah Marrow swearing in of Chief McKee. So really, at the end of the day, we're just going to be somewhat limited on space, so, but obviously, we can handle what we have, and I think everybody understands that a little bit. So he's got some family coming in.
I said the 19th, that's the 17th, I'm sorry. It's two weeks from tonight. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Next on, next we have reports of standing committees. We have one from finance, one from service, one from capital improvements, and one for personnel, without objection. Those will be received and filed. And under reports of city officials, Brenda Cooper, we have income tax reports in the 415, 2021. That will also be received and filed. Under communications this evening, we have one from Marcia Phelps, need to consider improvements. We have one from Trish Perry, steps of change stomping stigma, that is May 15, 2021. I think that might be a 5K if I remember correctly. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control, a new application for incredible pizza. And also one from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, I noticed that liquor permits for everyone will be in this political subdivision on July 1st, 2021 will be renewed. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. That's time for you to give us your opinion. Again, this is not a debate with council or a question and answer period. This is just your chance to speak. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand. I'll call you up one at a time, and give us your name and address for the record, and we'll go from there. Let it? There's another section of citizens' comments after the legislation.
Linda Mossholder, 224 Green Meadow Drive in Newark. First, I'd like to give an update on the COVID vaccinations that we did at the homeless outreach. All but two of the 22 people came back for the second dose. One person actually did not get her first dose there, but she got it at OSU, and she's in a wheelchair, so she was unable to arrange with, on the transit, to get her, for her second dose, so they allowed her to get her second dose there. And we also vaccinated 10 new people. So the Health Department will be coming back every three weeks for a while to make sure we keep updating on that. The other thing I would like to mention, it recently came to my attention, that there's going to be a webinar, and I will forward this information to Janine, in the form of an email. It's called "Maximizing Historic Stimulus to Solve Homelessness and Support Vulnerable Communities." It'll be on May 13th, and it's targeted toward elected officials and community leaders. So it would be an opportunity to see how this money that's coming down from the government can be used to address the homelessness issue. So I will forward that email on to Janine, so she can forward it to the rest of the group. And again, I would like to be, the community to be informed of how the city plans to use their money that's coming down. It should be coming down very soon. I think the Treasury Department's going to start releasing it in May with the guidelines. And again, just asking that we have some opportunity for community input. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments? Okay. We will launch your ordinances on the second reading, 21-15.
Ordinance number 21-15 by Mr. Fennell, Mr. Bub, and Mr. Marmee, an ordinance amending a part of a 20-foot wide alley as shown on the cloud of Lucius Smith edition, as recorded in Volume 2, Page 156 of the Lincoln County flat records, and renumbered in Volume 52, Page 19 of the Lincoln County deed records. Said alley is located south of East Real Road Street between South 2nd and South 3rd Streets.
You've heard your second reading of 21-15. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Fennell?
I'd like to make a motion to, excuse me, to vote on 21, ordinance 21-15.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Fennell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang. Is there any discussion on 21-15? Seeing none, Janine, please call the roll.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. LaBoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
21-15 passes 9-0. Now we move on to ordinances on the first reading, 21-16.
Ordinance number 21-16 by Mr. Bub, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Rath, an ordinance admitting the position classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the City of Newark, Department of Service, Division of Cemetery and Parks, by admitting the position of Secretary I to the classification of Office Manager, Account Clerk, and setting the compensation therefor.
21-16 will be held for two weeks till our next meeting on the 17th. Next on the first reading, we have 21-17.
Ordinance number 21-17 by Mr. Bub, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Rath, an ordinance admitting the position classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the City of Newark, Department of Service, Division of Traffic Control and Streets, by creating the classification of data technician, sawing fabricator, and setting the compensation therefor.
21-17 will also be held for two weeks till our next meeting. And now we move on to resolutions on the second reading, 21-21.
Resolution number 21-21 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Lang, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Bub. Resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Heard your second reading of 21-21. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmee?
I make a motion to adopt resolution 21-21.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barker. Is there any discussion on 21-21? Seeing none, Janine, please call the roll.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. LaBoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
21-21 passes 9-0. Next, resolutions on the first reading, 21-25.
Resolution number 21-25 by Mr. Rath, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to negotiate and enter into contract with the Lincoln County Humane Society, subject to the appropriation of funds for the provision of certain animal welfare functions.
21-25 will be held for two weeks till our next meeting on the 17th. Next, we go on to 21-26.
Resolution number 21-26 expedite by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Rath, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
21-26.
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmee?
I make a motion to waive the two-day read and roll in resolution 21-26.
Motion to waive the two-day read and roll by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barker. Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. We need to expedite this because we have some accounts that we need to do some rearranging in order to make sure that it's in the appropriate accounts, some expenditures and some bills that need to be paid immediately, so, especially with the stormwater and sewer. So we need this expedited, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. No discussion on waiving the two-day read and roll. Janine, please call the roll.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. LaBoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Two-day read and roll is no waive, Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt resolution 21-26.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barker? Do we have any other discussion on 21-26? Seeing none, Janine, please call the roll.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. LaBoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
21-26 passes 9-0. Next on the first reading, we have 21-27.
Resolution number 21-27 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Rath, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety Office for federal fiscal year 2022 Ohio Traffic Safety Grants Programs, Selective Traffic Enforcement Program STEP, the Impair Driving Enforcement Program IDEP, and the Drunk Driving Enforcement Program DDEP.
Nicely done. 21-27 will be held for two weeks till our next meeting. Next, we go to 21-28.
Resolution number 21-28 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Rath, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
21-28 will be held for two weeks till our next meeting. Next, we have 21-29.
Resolution number 21-29 by Mr. Lang, Mr. Marmee, and Mr. Rath, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
21-29 will be held for two weeks till our next meeting. And finally tonight, we have 21-30.
Resolution number 21-30 by Mr. Marmee and Mr. Rath, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to apply for financial support from the State of Ohio 2021 Nature Works Grant.
And 21-30 will be held for two weeks till May 17th till our next meeting. And that concludes our legislation this evening. Thank you so much for your attention. I appreciate it. Next, we have our final opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, this is not a debate with council or a question and answer period. This is your chance to be heard. Do we have anyone for this period? Please raise your hand. Ma'am, you want to come on up and give us your name and address? Anyone else like to speak this period? So I get you lined up?
First of all, I would like to say good evening to everyone, and glad to see everybody's back. And we have to understand that when you all are voted in-
Give us your name and address first.
Oh, my name is Callie Rucker, and I reside at 130 Delmar Avenue, Newark, Ohio 43055.
Thank you, ma'am.
And what I, sometimes things have to be reinforced. Sometimes when people have a job to do, they forget about the rest of the people. This is just my opinion. It's like, it's a community, we have to work together. It's like networking. And a lot of times, when the people get voted in, this is only my opinion, you can't find them when you need something. And the kids are being traumatized, just, like I say, just my opinion now. And seem like they want to get rid of the older generation. Again, this is just my opinion. And what I'm seeing is that certain parts of the area is like a little bit better than the other area, if you get my drift. And I am the type of person, if you have been blessed, you have to reach back and put the other people forward, not make fun of them. That's what I'm seeing, a lot of time, people make fun of other people because they are not where they're at. And I always tell people, never make fun of anybody, because if you do, what goes around, comes around. And I see this all the time. And I am, am I saying something wrong, people? I am an advocate for education. And in order for the younger generation to survive, we have to, have to be behind them 150%, because they are our future. And another thing, what I'm looking at, they handed the kids everything on a gold platter. The drugs, the alcohol, the baby, the cigarettes, the guns. They hand it to them on a silver platter. And just my opinion again, it's like, it's a political thing, and it's a money-making situation. When you be, be around, when you look, certain things come to, certain things come to you. You have to be open to a lot of things, and you have to talk to the younger generation and not at them. We have to treat them with dignity, pride, and respect. And I always tell them, we go to school and get the education, because education is something nobody can take away from you. So I think I've said enough. And me, as being an advocate for education, I'm getting ready to give the teachers over at the Wilson Miller School, which I've been doing for years and years and years. I teach appreciation, like, and I'm quite sure a lot of people have forgotten Teach Appreciation Week, which is this week. And if anybody that has been a teacher, or know anybody that's gone for teacher, I admire them, because teaching is one of the hardest jobs that you can have. So if anybody wants to come over Thursday, it's going to be Thursday over at the Wilson Miller School. And I chose Wilson because I like the energy that I get from Mr. Davis over there. And if anybody wants to come, and they could teach you, because like I say, they have the hardest job that it is. And the things that the teachers went through and the kids went through, I went through it right along with them. And that's all I have to say, and I hope people take this into consideration, because the kids, it's our future. And the way they're being treated, me personally, I don't like it. Just me personally. And the kids are traumatized now. They are trying to separate them, and then I'm going to sit down after this. They have to leave this younger generation alone, but some of them act better than we do. It's sad to say, because we're supposed to set an example for them, and all the stuff that they're saying, they're traumatized. Ask me how I know, because I interact with them every day. Every day I interact with them. They're trying to separate them, they got to understand, they're going to break bread together. They're going to worship together. They're going to work together. They're going to go to school and college together, and whatever kids do, they're going to do that. So we have to let them make their decision, because some of them, they are just dying to get the education, but they're denied a lot of thought. I see this from my point of view. I'm not talking about nobody else, I'm not trying to get nobody's to go on my side. It's what I see, because I interact with them every day. So I've said enough, and like I said, if you want to come over to Wilson Miller School Thursday, you're welcome to come and say thank you to a teacher of whatever school you want to go to. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. What time is that Thursday?
They start early, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock? Thank you.
If anybody's ready to come, if anyone's ready.
Thank you. Is there any city officials this evening who would like to speak? Our Honorable Assistant, I'll direct the board.
Thank you. Happy to be here tonight. It's awesome to see things getting back to normal, doing in-person meetings versus Zoom, so I'm very excited to be here. I wanted to give a shout out to the COFC Officer Academy in conjunction with the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office, who held a great event this past Saturday, the Twilight Blue Line 5K Run. The funds from this run went to the Officer Thomas Cottrell Fund, as well as the Stuff the Backpack program with the Sheriff's Office. So if you've never participated in the Twilight Run, it's a great event on the Newark Bike Path. It was a great run, so just wanted to tell them, thank you, and thank them for putting that together, and if you haven't done it, try it next year, it's fun. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Hall?
Yeah, thank you. It is May, and I think not only we'll meet in person, there's a few things going on this week and later in the month. Friday night, the farmer's market starts, so that'll be first farmer's market from 4 to 7:00 PM. I think that's going to be welcome. I had kind of a tough year last year, a little bit. Still will be face coverings and a lot of protections in there, but I think it's important to reach out and support those vendors. We also, the chamber is putting on a Cinco de Mayo sip and stroll in the downtown, with this council's blessing. We have a Dora in the downtown, and this will be one of those that opens up beyond the limits of just each individual bar. Been a lot of hard work put into this in a lot of ways. Looks like it's going to be dry, looks like it could be an upper 50, so just a hinge pole, but I don't think, I don't want a damper on anything. But the downtown businesses are welcome and ready for that, to help fuel business a little bit. And they've been doing pretty good, but any little help can help. So I encourage everyone to kind of join in the downtown and across the community as summer's on its way. So thank you very much.
That's 4 to 9, late, kind of the late Cinco de Mayo.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you. It's good to be back in council and see other council members in person. And I want to thank Granville Christian Academy Middle and High School students for doing some cleanup Friday along all the bike trail and stuff down on the east side. And speaking of that, Saturday will be the East End cleanup, starting at 8:00, we meet the noon. And the trash dumpster will be at Carson Elementary. And I also want to tell Mayor Hall, I think he did a great job on picking the new police chief. I've talked to a couple officers, and they're really happy with the choice, so good job there, Mayor. I'd like to welcome former councilman John Ubel out there. All I can see is shiny bald head, and that's how it ends. And without hats.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. LaBoudis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too am very happy with Chief McKee coming on board. He's been a fantastic fit there. I look forward to working with him as well. And I also want to thank Granville Christian Academy for their work on Friday, for their Irish Day. They were at 12 different locations throughout the city, with all their middle school and high school students being released for the day to do community service. So they did a fantastic job, and I thank them for that. With that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Miss Mossholder, thanks for coming and sharing the work that you're doing with the Newark Homeless Outreach to get the folks vaccinated. I think that's some good, good work. Sounds like it's, it's been pretty successful, so hopefully those numbers continue. Wanted to congratulate Chief McKee. I think he's going to be, you know, coming in under sad circumstances, but I think he's going to be a good fit for the department. I've definitely received a lot of good feedback already from some of the officers I've spoken with. And then I'd like to thank our engineer, Brian Moorhead, and Director Rhodes for getting our paving list finalized. I know we're going to be getting that out to bid next month, about $1.6 million in paving this year, so it's going to be a real, real night, busy summer. It's going to be inconvenient, to say the least, but we'll end up with some new roads, which I'm really excited about. And then, of course, really excited to hear that we've selected a contractor for the roundabout at Sharon Valley Road and Country Club. It's going to be a great addition for the fifth ward. I've gotten a lot of really positive feedback for that already. I think we're, you know, again, it'll be inconvenient, but when it's all said and done, it's really going to improve traffic flow around there. So with that, I'll pass. Thanks.
And then we do something about King and Sharon Valley Road. Thank you, Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to call a finance committee meeting for our next set of meetings. And I think the fix for King is it's going to be a right turn only, so. King is going to be a right turn only. There's your fix.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
That would be wonderful.
So I also want to thank Brian Moorhead and David Rhodes for the paving lists. It's an aggressive undertaking for the summer, and I appreciate that, because we really do need a number of roads paved and get those completed this year, so I want to thank them. I also want to congratulate Chief McKee. Reached out to him as soon as he was, it was announced. He was very quick to respond, so that's always a good sign when you're in my position. So I think he will be great to work with. And everybody else on, you know, as far as the officers and the captains and everything, they're all in support. They're all going to support each other, and they're going to support us. And so I'm really looking forward to working with them. Also want to just put a little bit of a shout out for Horns Hill. There's a lot of bike riders out there every weekend, and they are just having a blast. They're doing it, and they're keeping it clean. They maintain the trails. I saw them cutting out a new trail this last weekend, so they are up there not only enjoying themselves, but working on the trails also. So I think we're getting folks from all over the state of Ohio, even outside of the state of Ohio, coming in just to ride those trails. And so I think it's fantastic for our community, and I want to thank Director Rhodes, he kind of pushed that and everything, and it's, it's been fantastic for that area. And with that, I will pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Mr. Rath?
Thank you. Welcome, Assistant Director of Board. Glad to have you here tonight.
Feel free to talk about anything you want, as long as it's not Clemson.
I promise.
Glad to welcome Chief McKee, congratulate him on his promotion. It's funny, a couple people asked me for his phone number, and I had sent it over to him, and they reminded me that I needed to update my contact information, because I still hadn't had him listed as Sergeant McKee. So it's been a while since I've updated that, but glad to see you here. Mr. Ubel, it's good to see you here as well. We need another shiny dome in any area, another thinker like you and I. That's great to have you here, I appreciate that. Glad to thank the Christian Academy for coming out and doing some of the cleanup. I know they did some of that in third ward. Appreciate that very much. It was great to see the paving list. Like Mr. Marmy said, that is a very aggressive list. I was happy to see that we were using some CDVG money for that as well. Really appreciate that. And I will call a Service Committee meeting for the 17th. And with that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Rath, Mr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I think first, I'd have to say that I'm actually pretty glad that I don't have to frantically search for the flag for you, as we were on Zoom to do the Pledge of Allegiance when I would forget, so I'm glad for that.
Me too.
Yeah. But again, congratulations to newly appointed Chief McKee. I know that I've talked to the chief, as well as some other deputies, who have said, you know, while they're still mourning, they do, you know, have great respect for our new chief, and we really look forward to seeing how he takes the department, what direction he takes it. The mayor mentioned it, the door this Friday. I would definitely encourage the community to take part in that. And it's something that during COVID, I know Councilman Rath had mentioned earlier, he had been talking about it for a while. It's something that I'm glad we were able to get for downtown. I also, as Councilman Marmy said, encourage everyone to check out Horns Hill Park. I was fortunate enough as Parks Chair to be on a call last week in regards to a grant the city is looking to get to enhance the playground area at Horns Hill. And so that's something that we're aggressively working on to create as a more, even more family environment than it already is today. I know there's a Facebook group that they, the writers have up there, and they're posting on it all the time. They've even created a way to get bikes up back to the hill from down at the bottom of the hill with a shuttle system. So it's great to see that engagement in our city parks. And with that, Mr. President, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Berger, Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everyone that Thursday is the National Day of Prayer, and our guest pastor tonight, being a part of the Newark Area Ministerials Association, they're releasing a video, which will reflect in memorance of the day, so that's to come out. I also want to give kudos to Service Director Rhodes and the Engineers' Office, and just anyone involved with the construction work that's happening on State Route 13 and South Fourth Street. You know, that's coming along very well. I was down there on Saturday, and they have really wide sidewalks, and the part down by National Drive is, you know, it's already getting pavement laid down, so it's looking very, very nice. And so once, as the work starts coming up to downtown, it's going to be quite beautiful, really, so it looks really good. I also want to give my congratulations to Chief McKee. I did speak with the chief last week, and, you know, just to congratulate him and look forward to working with him. Look forward to having a one-on-one meeting with him once he gets settled in and once things get calmed down for him, and also bringing him to Kiwanis to have lunch with